I'll go ahead and call to order this regular meeting, Nelson County School Board, June 19th, 2018, at approximately 5:04 PM. Before we get into the board's business, I'd like to make sure that folks know that Ms. Berry, I'm kinda pointing here at the iPad for the moment, that's Ms. Berry. She is located at 9800 International Drive in Orlando, Florida. She had a conflict out of town today, but she is joining via, is it Skype? FaceTime, okay. She's joining via FaceTime. So she can hear what's going on in here, and I'll try and make sure that as she waves at me, or yells at me, or something, that I'll move the mic over there, so that everybody can hear her, or otherwise, we might get a lot of feedback if we leave it there the entire time. With that, first thing would be pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your government, for which sustains one nation, united cause, and a vision of liberty and justice for all.
The board mission statement, "The Nelson County Board of Education, representatives of our citizens and entrusted with their children, pledges to support the mission of the Nelson County School District by setting visionary direction to effective policy, oversight, and efficient resource management." The district vision statement, "Quality education now, learning for life." Ms. Bradley, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda today.
Okay, thank you. Going into item number three, student and shareholder engagement, student performance?
We have some students here from the Nelson County High School drama program, and Ms. Jerry or Mr. Parks will be introducing them.
So we have a group of students who performed for us in the spring musical, Modern Really. And so Robbie Moran tonight is gonna sing for you, "What Do I Need With Love." And Kaylee Morris, Gavin Ballard, Holden Underwood, and Brett Phelps are gonna be singing, "Long As I'm Here With You." So I hope you will enjoy it, because they put on a phenomenal performance this past spring.
(singing)
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 ...by Heaven Hill Distillery and Jim Beam Distillery, who would like to do something to partner with the foundation in some way. And I told them that that was definitely something that we would be willing to look at. The foundation obviously wants to bring more funds in, and that was one way to do it. We are the bourbon capital of the world, so we felt that that was only fitting. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit for grants, and so we have the Salt River Electric Grant has been requested but not received. The Kiwanis Club has been requested and received. Town and Country Bank, we have received their grant. BCD has provided a grant to us, and the Walmart Foundation has, actually this year we got two grants from them. And then GBA did an in-kind grant with us this year. So, we feel very fortunate to have all of these coming in. They're getting used to us, and they know that the foundation is doing a great job, and hopefully that will continue in the future. We did have our senior alumni night, the first one in a long time since 2011, and I had many of the alumni express their appreciation. Thomas Nelson High School was an excellent host. They did a great job and made us all feel welcome. Lee's Chicken provided the dinner for us, so everybody enjoyed that. And then we will be having 2018 fundraiser mailing in fall. The 2018 annual financial update, we have in our gaming account fourteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents. We have in our general account a hundred and six thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-eight ten. So, that's toothpenny, thanks to Ms. Carla for giving those numbers for me as of May 31st. And so lastly, I would like to read something to you. Dear Nelson County School Board members, please accept this letter as notice of my retirement from the Nelson County Schools Community Support Foundation as of June 30th, 2018. It has been my pleasure to have had this opportunity to serve the Nelson County Schools as the director of the foundation for the past two and a half years. I feel that we have met or exceeded the goals set forth at the beginning of my employment, and I look forward to seeing the foundation grow and prosper in the coming years. I just want to thank you so much for your support and your guidance during my employment, and I wish that Nelson County School District much success in the future. I know, I've told Wes he has a plan, and I know they're just going to be phenomenal. So, we're all excited to see that transition take place. If you need me for anything, you know where to find me, so just give me a call. And thank you so much.
Ms. White, I know that you mentioned several other people's names, Amber and several others at Alderwood. I think it goes without saying though that a lot of it starts at the top. And whenever you stepped forward, whenever you were voluntold, whenever you raised your hand and volunteered, whichever way it was, back a few years ago, we knew that there were some great things that were going to happen with the community support fund. And I think the work that you laid, the foundation that you laid, it's going to go a long way for it to be a long thriving group. So, we do appreciate all your work, and you deserve to have fun.
My husband said it's okay to do nothing.
Yeah, but, but you said June 30th, so as my count, we've got eleven more days that we can take advantage of you.
Well, before I leave, all the checks will be in the mail. Everything will be made tidy, and I just appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you again. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, Operations Consent Agenda. This consists of the information, personnel actions, treasurers' report, bills and claims, munis' report, leaves of absence, minutes from previous meeting, overnight out-of-state trips, fundraiser requests, as well as the second reading for the policies. I'll ask, or I'll remind, if we've all had these to look at since the meeting was open. Whenever it comes to the policy second readings, we had the first readings at our work session. I'll simply ask if, whenever it comes to the policies part of the consent agenda, were there any questions or anything that anybody else needed to bring up as far as board members? Ms. Berry, you okay?
Oh, I'm fine.
Okay. Ms. Berry said she's fine too. So with that then, I'll need a motion for the Operations Consent Agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Dickerson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor? Aye. Ms. Berry?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Motion passes. So let it show that all five were ayes. Oh, I'm sorry, all four were ayes. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Efficient Resource Management, item five, five A, the salary book.
As you just mentioned regarding policies and procedures, I think it was June 4th, a couple of weeks ago at the work session, we spent quite a bit of time going through the salary book. Since that time, there's not been any questions raised to me. It's unchanged. So unless there are additional questions that you all have thought of over the last couple of weeks, I'm simply going to recommend approval at this time of the salary book. Again, it's unchanged from our discussion a couple of weeks ago. It's very similar to what you've seen over the, the content is the same with a few minor changes that are reflected. The format's a little different, as we're gradually migrating documents to a new and different format. So if there's no questions, I'll make a recommendation to approve the salary book.
And we've got a plan in place as far as publicizing the payday changes?
Absolutely. That will be distributed to all employees. And again, I think we talked at the work session, but I'll say tonight, I don't think employees will notice a change technically. Folks will be getting paid one day earlier on the first paycheck. It's, we're going from the first day of the month to the last day of the preceding month. So, most folks aren't going to notice that. If they do notice a change, it'll be one day prior to what they've been paid. So I don't expect any complaints. I think it's a good move, it's positive for the district, it helps us become more efficient to strive towards that.
And I think, I mean typically, the biggest questions anytime I had to do a salary schedule is, do I still get the same number of checks? Can I still expect the pay to arrive at the same timeframe? Of course, the first question, same number of checks. Second half, as you just explained, things are moving forward one day, one day earlier than the past.
And as Mr. Bradley's suggestion to include a page in that document that spells out, you know, sometimes it's easy when you're here for a while. You know all this stuff. We know when people get paid. I know when the wrestling coach gets paid for the wrestling season. But we hire new people, and we forget, they don't know all this stuff. So we're trying to fix some of those things as we go through some of this change, and I think that suggestion was a good one. So I think folks should be able to look at that book now, and it's more informative now than it was before the changes.
Yeah, it tells the actual date of the month instead of saying, well, it's twice a month.
Exactly.
Let me ask a question. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Go for it.
Okay, Ms. Hawkins, with this interest, with this interest in our account, is that the last day of the month?
Interest is posted on the last day of the month, yes ma'am.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I like the way it cleared, cleaned up a lot of the carryover from month to month, the issues that you were having previously.
Right.
Most of that needs to be expanded on, or we talked about it earlier.
Just, we can, just briefly, the, you know, we didn't anticipate, we'd have one payday. I came to work here in '98, I don't know how long prior to that, we'd had one paycheck a month. And I have talked two or three times over those twenty years, you know, should we go twice a month, bi-weekly? You know, districts do it. A number of other districts pay once a month, but I think most people, when we hire people, they're used to getting paid at least a couple of times a month. And so we had that conversation again. A year or so ago, opted to go to two paychecks a month, and just one of those unintended consequences, unanticipated consequences of paying on the first of the month, and the bank reconciliation piece, and direct deposit files having to be issued, and the issues that was creating for us, going to the last day of the preceding month clears all those things up, and there's no negative impact at all on the employees. So, we feel good about that change. And again, I don't think employees, employees won't be affected at all. We'll clean up some of that stuff, help us be, continue towards greater efficiency, I hope.
I think like anything you said, if anything that they would notice, it would be possibly hitting their bank account maybe one day earlier than what they had in the past.
Correct.
Any other questions? So then need a motion to approve the salary schedule for FY 2019?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Dye.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor? Ms. Berry?
I didn't know I could have folk doing this, but I was, yes.
Okay, so that's four, the four ayes there, let the record show. Moving on then to five B, Little League Basketball. Mr. Hawkins, Matt?
Yeah, and this, we said a couple of weeks ago, we've talked about this a couple of times prior to that. This is, I think is, you know, highlights our continued efforts to build community partnerships. Mr. Broadus is with us tonight, and been around very long. You know, Mr. Broadus does a lot of things. One of the things he's run since, as long as I can remember, is the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade basketball league that we operate in our schools. And, you know, my concern has been, Mr. Broadus, maybe one day, we just had someone retire tonight that decided, yeah, they're going to do something different. He may never want to do that, but I don't want him to feel trapped here, feel like if he leaves, people are going to be harmed. I think what this agreement allows is for him to feel at ease, if he wants to step back a little bit one day, he'll know that things aren't going to go, won't disappear. These programs that I know are near and dear to all of us for kids, won't disappear. We'll now have a partnership with the County Recreation Department and Fiscal Court. The parents, students, the schools, won't really see much of a difference, other than the fact that we will have some outside help running these programs. And it won't all fall on Mr. Broadus back here, you know, as a volunteer. They have paid staff at the county, and he'll still be operating like he always has, assisting, running the Nelson County location. Our other schools will be hosting games. Again, for parents and players and coaches at our schools, they're not going to really see a change, but we know now we have some continuity. If we were to, if Mr. Broadus were to step away one day, you know, I know it's always when you have volunteers, and that's what he is in this role. You know, there's always a little nervousness when you transition from one volunteer to the next, because it's hard to find people to do those things. And this, I think alleviates some of those concerns. Again, because, you know, basketball's big around here, and we want kids to have an opportunity to play. I think this provides a little bit of an insurance policy to make sure that that's viable going forward. So we're excited and recommend it to you tonight.
Well, it sounds like something that the Nelson County Recreation Department, Fiscal Court was very excited about.
They are.
Just being, well, so it wasn't just us saying, hey, let's make sure we've got that continuity in place, but also them coming to us and saying, hey, we'd like to partner with you.
Yeah, the timing works out great. They already operate, he's football, he's baseball, he's soccer, but in the winter months, there's a window of time there where they've got the time to assist with something like this. So it works out perfect, perfect partnership, I think. And they're already working with all the same parents and kids on all these other programs, and most of these are the same families. They're going to be very familiar with the folks they'll be working with. They'll also be working with people in our schools, but I think it's a lot of possibilities, and it'll be some help, Mr. Broadus back here. He's worked really hard with this program over the years, and at least give him, if he wants to go, like I heard him say, a couple of weeks ago, he might want to go to spring training one day. Well, he hasn't ever been able to do that, because he's been running a basketball league. Maybe he'll feel like he can go down there for a few days if, if he were to choose to now. He won't feel trapped. So, he'll at least have some help, and there'll be continuity going forward for our families.
And I know whenever, we spent quite a bit of time talking about this at the work session, I assume that between yourself and Mr. Broadus, this may be more of a question for Mr. Broadus, as well as folks from the County Rec Department. Sat down, went through all the agreements and everything, were very comfortable with, you're comfortable with, Mr. Broadus?
Yes.
Sounds good. That's all I need to hear, is Mr. Broadus say yes. Anybody else got any questions?
I like this, sexy guy. Everybody needs one.
Okay.
Now, motion to approve the agreement.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Dickerson to approve the Little League Basketball Agreement.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor? Aye. Four ayes opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item five C, the GREC Membership, Green River Regional Educational Cooperative. Did I get that one right, Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Okay.
As discussed at the work session, each year we make an intention to be a part of a local cooperative. In the past, we've been a part of CKDC. This is a move to GREC, which stands for Green River Regional Educational Cooperative. And since we didn't get to look at this as close in the working session, Carla, if you could pull up the information on GREC, the GREC overview document. And page four has that map, that's what I wanted to show, was the map. Given this decision and recommendation is based on opportunities to continue innovate across western Kentucky. We are around the edge of the east side of the cooperative, and feel like there are a lot of opportunities in those districts to continue, to collaborate around some of our intentions around inspiring leadership and learning, especially if we continue to go one-to-one in our district. Any questions about this?
I mean, just looking, roughly looking at the map, I'd say probably twenty percent of the school districts, fifth of the school districts in the state are a member of it.
Yes, I believe it's forty-three districts, and, oh, I'm sorry, forty-three counties there, it looks like. And it's the largest cooperative in the state of Kentucky.
Any other questions?
Yes, I want to know the advantages.
Okay, so if you want to say that again, Ms. Berry?
I would like to know the advantages of looking over to that, to that construction that we're using.
I think, looking at the opportunities with the districts in western Kentucky, as a superintendent, I feel like we're going to have opportunities to continue to collaborate in new and innovative ways. There are lots of, lots of strong districts throughout the western part of our state, as well as a lot of strong superintendents, and it extends our, our reach far into the west side of our state. So, I think it's, for, for me, it was a clear answer around opportunity to continue to innovate.
Could you give me some district names, please?
Yes, sir, I know you can't see the, I guess you can see it on the KSBA. So, there are a number of districts. You go down the line here, we got E-Town, Glasgow, Hardin County, LaRue County, Marion County, Bean County. There are forty-three districts listed there.
It, it looks to me like pretty much everything from just a little west of Owensboro, to, I'd say probably the furthest east is going to be the Marion or the LaRue County, and it goes from the Ohio River all the way down to the Kentucky-Tennessee border. So, you've got Boeing Green Independence, the Warren Counties, the probably Trig, Christian Callaway. One thing, knowing a little bit about something that you just said, Mr. Bradley, you know, one of our, our intentions of moving towards that one-to-one initiative, changing the way that our students learn, the toolkit that our teachers have to change that learning environment. One thing I can say is that we've got great things going on in central Kentucky that CKDC is part of. I will also say though, that in the GREC area, they participated in some large grants that they've received about changing the way we learn, the way we teach. And also, there's a, a high percentage of those school districts that are in that area that are G-suite districts, and several of them are one-to-one districts as well. So that'd give us some opportunities to pool resources from their experiences too.
Yeah, I think it just expands our opportunities. We, we have a lot of connections in central Kentucky and northern Kentucky, and I think this really extends our reach out further in the state.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Can you only be part of one co-op? No, you can be part of multiple co-ops. So we, in the past, we've been part of Central Kentucky Educational Cooperative. There's a fee involved, and that's part of the process, and that's really for me. So, partly to the federal funding for these cooperatives around special education and federal programming runs through the cooperatives as well. So we'll still be a part of Central Kentucky Educational Cooperative, and Ms. Clark is doing some of that work with them now, and will continue to. We'll now also be able to do that with Green River Educational Cooperative.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, that it's not a singular membership.
Exactly. You can join every one of the states.
At, at one time, I think there were about eight of them in the state. There may still be, I can't remember them all, but kind of geographically located around around Kentucky. Okay, so then we would need a motion to approve joining GREC?
Yes. Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Dickerson.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor? Aye. Ms. Berry?
I said aye.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Any ayes? No, so it's a four O on that as well, Ms. McKay. Moving on into five D, Additional College and Career Renus Coordinator Position.
As discussed in the work session, in order to meet our goals of early college and career opportunities for every student by 2020, senior class, we need to allocate resources at the local, local high school level to begin with. And both of these roles, so this is an extension of Amber Cootie's role. Amber's role would move to a high school. There would be another role that would mirror that role, that would form the workforce development team with our recently hired workforce development director. And this role would be essentially part of that process. So again, just coming back, as we've gone through these conversations over the past two weeks, we've talked about early college and career opportunities for every senior in the class of 2021. And in order to meet that goal, we know we have to allocate human resources to do that effectively. So this is just that, really aligning to that goal.
So this would put mirrored positions at each of the two high schools, Thomas Nelson and Nelson County, so that we've got the services down in the buildings.
Yes, it is a massive undertaking to ensure that every high school student is working towards in their senior schedule, and in some cases their junior schedule, early college and career opportunities. We're very excited to bring on board Ms. Laura Arnold as our Workforce Development Director beginning August 1st, and these two individuals will be a part of that team, and they would also be working closely with the principals, and they would be members of that team at the school level, but they would be essentially district allocated positions.
Do we have any questions?
I think to, to support the page you go forward, these roles are essential and completely distributed to the two master.
All the conditions of merit?
Motion by Ms. Dye to approve the Additional College and Career Renus Coordinator Position.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that an aye, Ms. Berry?
I can't, I couldn't hear that last part. It's a motion for why?
A motion to approve the Additional College and Career Renus Coordinator Position.
Okay, that's what I thought, but if you sort of zoom down on me, I can barely hear Mr. Bradley.
Okay, so we've got four ayes in your pose? No, so that passes four O. Moving on to five E, Job Description, Revisions and Abolishments. Mr. Bradley?
Yeah, as we discussed in the work session, we were revising two positions, the Chief Finance Officer and the School Resource Officer, and we were abolishing a number of positions. And those are listed there on the screen. We are also, just to be clear, there are four positions that are being abolished based on central office position reorganization to better align resources to serve the mission of Nelson County Schools. All the other positions are either no longer existent, have become obsolete, or redundant.
So, with the exception of those four that you mentioned, the others are just, it's cleanup that probably should have been done at some point along through the years, but just had not been done.
Yes, in many cases, that is, that's what occurred, yes.
Okay, so we've got the revision to both the CFO, Chief Financial Officer, and the School Resource Officer position, and then the, how many did you say that were being abolished?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Okay. So then we need a motion to approve the revision to the two and the abolishment of the twenty-three.
What motion?
Motion by Mr. Dickerson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I heard Ms. Berry there, so that's four ayes in your pose? Four O. Moving on then to item five F, Data Security Presentation. Mr. Morgan?
So we are required to do this presentation once a year before August. The new board members probably haven't seen this yet. Did anybody get a chance to look at the presentation before, maybe? I don't know where that, okay. All right, so that is actually what this piece of legislation says, that we're required to acknowledge to the board that we are following best practices. Um, so that we have actually reviewed the guidance, so once a year, to make sure we go back, we look at best practices that are provided to us from the state. So, we go back, look at this, and then you can tell you what we're, what we're doing, what we found, things like that. There is the best practice guide, if you want to take a look at it. It's not real fun reading, but I have, I have read it, and I've read it before this presentation every year, just to make sure that I have kept up to date, make sure there's no changes, things like that. So if you guys want to take a look, you can. I'm not going to read the relevant legislation to you there. You can see those, there's a lot of legislation and laws around this. I'm going to distill this at the end of the presentation to what all of this means in, in the real world, and how we approach it, and how we, how we use all of this together. I'm never going to be an expert in each of those, to the letter. It's, again, it's pretty difficult reading, but I'll tell you how we apply it. Board policies, I read those as well before this presentation to make sure, you know, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, make sure there's no gotchas. So, House Bill 232, the big thing there is it prohibits certain uses of stupid data by cloud vendors. So cloud vendors are anything like, like Infinite Campus is a cloud vendor, Google is a cloud vendor. So, what that, what cloud means is the data is off-site. It's not in our data center down here. We don't own it on the server. We own our data, but we don't, we don't manage the equipment that that data's on. So there's a, there's a lot of cloud services. We have more cloud services now than we do in-house services. But the way it defines student data is very, very broad, even to the point that you could almost say a drawing that a student did would be considered student data. So it's, makes it very tough. So, KDE requires that cloud providers certify and writing that they comply with the KRS. Districts, it's kind of open for interpretation of what districts do. We rely on the ULEs and the privacy policies of the vendors when we engage in business. So just as an example, if an elementary school wants to sign up for a specific service for their kids, we actually read the privacy policies from that vendor, the user license agreements, things like that. We try to look for things like, that they're not selling stupid data. We try to look for things like, that they're not selling stupid data, they're not, you know, that they're trying to implement best practices to protect student data, things like that. So those are the things that we rely on, are those ULEs and privacy policies. I will read that to you word for word, but you can see there, that is a very broad definition of student data. And that's, it goes back to what I was saying, it literally says any documents. So it's basically anything that a student creates is student data. And that is what's covered under that protected cloud data that the business has. House Bill five, the big thing there is it defines personal information and that is different than student data that I just talked about. I'll show you what that means here in just a second. But you, it also requires school districts to establish reasonable security and breach investigation procedures and practices. I will tell you again at the end, without distilling, what that means for us and what we do when we, when we think we have, might have a breach or potential breach or something like that. So this is the definition of PII, Personally Divisible Information. This is a lot more locked down than student data. So you could think of this as something that, a piece of data that gets out that someone could actually do harm with. That's the way I look at that. You could actually identify that person with that, with that piece of data. It could be damaging to that person, a student or staff. So these are just data breach incidents by type. It's just a quick graph. It's the latest one I could find. The biggest thing right now is phishing. Phishing is the most, by far, the most common way that data is stolen, networks are compromised. They rely on users clicking on those links in emails. So that is, that is by far the biggest way that you're going to have a data breach. So that leads right into current measures to defend against a breach. And again, I say defend against a breach, you know, we do our best for sure to try to make sure we've got secure networks, secure vendors that we're dealing with. Anyone can experience a breach, no one is, no one's bulletproof on that. The biggest thing that we, that I think we do is the know before phishing training. You've probably seen emails from us that, you know, you might get one, recent one was one that looked like Pizza Hut coupon, but it was Pizza Hat. And, you know, the logo looked like Pizza Hut, all of that. And when the users click on that link for a free pizza, it actually pops up like, hey, you should be more careful, you know, this is Pizza Hat, not Pizza Hut, things like that. So I think that's the most effective training that we do. We try not to bombard our users with it, you know, we send out an email every, every month, every two months. This has been really powerful because I'll have people forward me an email and say, oh, you didn't get me on this one. And I'm like, that wasn't us. So, you know, it's, it's working in some cases for sure. But you can see the other things we do there, the limited access, need to know, we try to limit permissions as much as we can. If you don't need access to the information, we try to lock those things down. Any questions on the types of things that we're doing there?
So, I mean, this isn't just a technology issue. I mean, you're, you're the, you're the CIO.
Yes.
But it's not just technology. I mean, I saw that you were talking about student records. I mean, the same type of principles apply if we were still in the paper gradebook days?
Absolutely. I mean, a great example is fax machine. If you, you know, everybody, fax machine's secure, right? Well, if it's sitting in a common area and you fax student data to it, then anybody can just walk by and pick it up. You know, that's, it's not really technology, but that's a data breach.
Or leaving computer unlocked with Infinity Campus open?
Yes, yep, that's a struggle, yes, that is a struggle as well.
I mean, that's the one that I always think about because in the days of the old red book or blue book or whatever, green book, whatever color it might have been in that school district, you had student grades that were sitting up there on the desk, usually open to that class period. And students had access, easily access to that. Now with Infinity Campus, if that gradebook is open, the computer is unlocked, students can walk by and not just see grades, not just change a grade, but see other information about students.
Yep, and some people would say to that specific situation, well, why don't you just set the screen to lock? You can do that, right? And we can, but then the teacher's up, actually teaching in class in the screen locks after ten minutes. So you gotta kind of walk that line, you gotta train users versus, you can't shut the classroom down, but you gotta figure out where that medium is between security and access to YouTube licenses.
So, so what would be two, three, I mean, if you had to tell just me as an average user, and I know as a board member, I don't have access into student data systems. I don't have access to get into Munus and run checks. There's reasons why, I have no need. But just the average person in the school district, I mean, what's two or three, like key things, you know, if they couldn't do anything else at all, what would be two or three things that we should make sure that we do?
Phishing, pay attention under your email. Take a look at who the email came from. Take a look, you can actually hover over the links in an email to see, it'll pop up in the bottom and tell you where it's going. If you're on a, if you're on a touchscreen device, you can press down on the link, which I don't like really doing because I'm trying to actually click it, but you can't hold down on it and it'll tell you where it's going to go to. And if it's not a place you recognize, don't click on it.
So instead of saying amazon.com, it might say Amazon with three Z's in it?
Yes, that's very common. It's very common, especially around Christmas time with shipping notifications and things like that. That one, we always send those out around Christmas time, so beware. But that, that's very common. But that's the biggest thing. I mean, I wouldn't even go to two or three. That is, that is so, so far and above everything else. I mean, you got the easy things, don't, don't put your passport on a post-it note on your monitor or, you know, things like that.
Or under your keyboard.
Or under your keyboard, yeah. Things, things like that. Those are the easy ones, but the email is, truly is, that's, that's how they're trying to get you for sure.
Something that I don't know, and we may have talked about this one at one point, but I forget which district it was, but I think it was back this spring, the superintendent who was also handling the CFO duties in preparing a school board package, uploaded information, whether they were using KSBA's e-meeting service or whether they were just doing it through Google Docs, I don't know. They uploaded the information that had the names, I think it was also the addresses, but definitely the social security numbers of every employee. And it was visible publicly for a period of time. And while the superintendent still has their job, I believe that this school district, and it was a district smaller than us, had to pay over a hundred thousand dollars for a three or five-year period of credit monitoring for every employee in the district. So that was a hundred thousand dollars plus, that could have been going towards something else within the district. By superintendent just doing a very simple, small mistake, not thinking about what is this information and who needs to see it? And do I upload it to where everybody can see it? Should that be done? Sometimes it's just the stop and think piece as well. Do I really need to? Slow down. Yeah, that's a good way to put it. Don't be scared there, Mr. Bradley, but make sure you don't post anything to social security.
You know, but that kind of goes back to need to know too. Do you, do you need to see social security numbers? Most people don't, you know, most people don't even need to see them to know. I'll kind of distill, so I want to, I want to at least kind of distill down what we do. So what, I need to be aware of what a breach is. Not to the letter, but I need to be aware of a potential breach. And we have a contact at KDE, Bob Hackworth. And if there's, if something even remotely smells like a data breach that I hear about, we contact Bob, he's the expert. So he's the expert on that. We talk through him like, was this a data breach? Is a notification required? You know, if so, he'll, he'll tell us who to contact. He helps us figure out and what we've got, if we even have a breach. So we, we really need to, in practice, be aware of data breaches, know what they are, try to prevent them of course, so that when something does occur that may be a breach, we can reach out to the experts and figure out what we need to do, where we need to go. That's kind of where we're, where we're at with it and how we, how we do this in practice.
Majority anymore, I mean, the majority of these data breaches aren't hackers hacking into systems, are they?
They are not.
It's simple mistakes that are unintentional.
Yes.
Simple unintentional mistakes, maybe someone didn't slow down or, I've, I've seen some before where a counselor at one school was in Nelson County emailed student names that were being retained. And they picked the wrong person's email address and it got emailed halfway across the state. And it was just, they were in a hurry, they just didn't pay attention to see who it was they were emailing it to. So I like that recommendation there too, that slow down, just stop and, slow down and think about it a little bit.
Yep. Any questions?
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Goodbye, can you jump in here? Moving on into item six, college and career readiness, the master schedules. Mr. Hawkins?
Once again, we discussed these, something to tell you a couple of weeks ago. I will tell you again, as I said earlier on the other issues, that these are unchanged with, I guess, one minor, as caveat, New Haven's schedule did change pretty substantially last year to this year. We learned since the work session that that change will require approval of the Commissioner of the Department of Education, which we feel like is a formality, we just, it's a matter of getting that from them. That schedule change has been approved by the school, the school council, and everyone is in support of that. But because of the nature of that change, it does require official KDE approval. So what we're recommending to you tonight is to adopt these master schedules as presented, but New Haven's would be pending that approval from the Department of Education.
Is, is New Haven's change over last year, is it more or less?
New Haven had a pretty substantial change. Last year, they, they started school later and ended earlier than they're beginning, at least this year they're starting earlier and ending later. They have a pretty substantial, longer day than they had previously. But again, it's full support of the staff, the council, and, but because of the nature of that, it does require KDE approval.
Big thing would be is that it's going in the positive versus a big change going in the negative?
Yeah, it's more time for those students. That's cool.
Yeah, they have a vision for just innovative things with kids and they had kids there waiting for buses really longer than they wanted. So they're going to be also working teacher times to make sure that they have some, some really innovative stuff going on, so they're starting some STEM work with students and messing with their schedules so that they're able to provide more opportunities for kids. Those kids are already in the building that length of time. In many cases, they were waiting for buses. So now, Mr. Peyton and Ms. Harbin and the site-based team, they felt it was really important if they used that time to continually extend opportunities to those students in New Haven.
Take advantage of the time that they're there?
Yes. They felt, they felt strongly about this. They invested a lot of time in developing a vision for it. And they felt strongly that this is something that they want to do.
So, so then what we would need to do on the bell schedules is a motion to approve with the understanding that New Haven's is pending final approval from the Commissioner of Education. Is that the way?
That's correct. That's actually.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay. So Mr. Dickerson, motions to approve the master bell schedule with the New Haven one pending final approval of the Commissioner of Education.
I'll second the same.
Ms. Dye, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four oh on approval. Thank you, Mr. Hawkinsman. Item six B, CKEC mini grant. Ms. Clark?
Again, we've covered this at the working session, so this is the mini grant that we requested. It was a fifteen hundred dollar grant and we got seventeen. So I recommend that you approve.
So this is the one we asked for last and they gave us more?
Well, yes, we were given stipulation and they gave us a little bit more based on what we asked for.
I think we'll have to approve that.
Motion by Ms. Dye. Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four oh. Thank you, Ms. Clark. We've also got six C, which is the Office of Vocational Rehab Agreement.
Yes, again, that was also printed, presented at the work session. That is for the Community Work Transition Program. That's just an agreement that they will work with us for that position in offering our students opportunities within our community and it coincides with workforce development.
So that, just a quick refresher, this is the one that was a hundred thousand?
No, that, no, that was, there's no, there's no money involved in this one. This one's just an agreement for us to work together on that.
Okay, okay. I was confusing the two there that you have been helping on. So then we need a motion to agree the Office of Vocational Rehab Agreement. Motion by Mr. Dickerson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four oh. Thank you, Ms. Clark. Now moving on to seven A, KSBA Medicaid Agreement.
Yes, so we talked briefly about this in the work session. We currently have a third-party billing agreement with PCG. KSBA offers a third-party billing agreement and I met with KSBA two weeks ago, or a week ago. And this would be an agreement to use them as a third-party billing provider. It's the same percentage, it's just a different provider, more locally. They have someone, I think they service a hundred and something districts versus PCG.
For what services would they be billing Medicaid?
Any service that we bill Medicaid for.
Could you give an example?
Okay, so speech therapy. We bill for speech therapy.
This is something totally separate, the school nurse program?
Yes, that is, yes, that is.
This is federal education related services?
Yes. So they would be billing for any OT, PT, it could be HealthAid.
You were looking for overlaps. That was right.
No, the nurses would assist in approving those, but it's a SAG from Humberland.
Okay. Okay, that's why I want to make sure they live in.
Any other questions? Okay, so then we would need a motion to approve the KSBA Medicaid Agreement as presented?
I'll motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Dye. Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four oh. Thank you, Ms. Clark. So, item eight, student shareholder agreement, guest comments. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address. And if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing. Okay, then I would need a motion to adjourn the regular session.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Dye. Second, second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, there is no executive session tonight. Thank you, Ms. Berry.
Thank you very much.
And look like I was flashering. And look like I was flashering.